I would like to call and order the June 2nd, 2015 meeting of the City of Statesboro City Council. I would like to ask Councilman Phil Boyham to please lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
You all better get through. Lord, I want to thank you for just this absolutely beautiful day outside here in South Georgia. Please be with the city staff and the county staff as they go about their days providing services, much-needed services for the citizens here in our community. Be with the staff and teachers of the Board of Education as they start their summer vacation and take some time away from the kiddos. Be with them as they travel and take some time off and refresh for the next year. Be with the council and staff as we make our decisions today. Be with the mayor as well, then we can lead a productive meeting. And, Lord, as we so often hear that our nation was founded on Christian principles, help us to live up to those Christian principles and follow the teachings of Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Do we have any public comments, Ms. Seif?
No.
All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 4, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll ask council to review that in minutes and then ask for a motion. I mean, make a motion, you approved, you can consent agenda as... Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I want to tell you about a couple of movements in our agenda today. Agenda Item 10, if council will look at Agenda Item 10, please, is Resolution 2015-14. We're going to remove that from the agenda because that grant is not going to be submitted. We're going to take Agenda Item 20, which is obviously toward the back of our agenda, which is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-16, which is a resolution appointing William Wright to the Tree Board of the City of Statesboro. And go ahead and do that at this time because Mr. Wright was given a little bit of misinformation as to when he was going to be coming up on the agenda. Mr. Seif apologizes for that, but we want to go ahead and do that so he can get off to a meeting. So, if we can go ahead and have Jason introduce Item 20, which is now Item 4.5.
I'll defer to Robert, that's okay, Seif. Okay.
Mayor, Council, Robert Seif, Tree Park Superintendent, City of Statesboro. I have before you today Mr. William Wright. Mr. Wright has entered an application to serve on the Tree Board and just has gone in front of the Tree Board, been reviewed by them, and has been signed off by them and the chairman.
Mr. Wright, would you come over? I want to thank you, Phil. You're a great man to serve. I'm going to hand it out and then go back and work on those issues to adopt you onto the board. And tell us quickly why you would like to serve.
I would just like to serve. I've been asked by a Western Parker, a friend of mine, who wishes to be what their responsibilities are. I feel like it's a good thing to be a contributor to the City of Statesboro, help beautify the city, looking pretty and that type of thing. So, I've got a little bit of experience in landscape design in my younger days, right out of college. So, I don't feel like I had a little bit of the offer to just...
Does council have any questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-16, which is a resolution appointing William Wright to the Tree Board of the City of Statesboro?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Appreciate it, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Appreciate it very much.
He's on the Tree Board now, it's William.
That's right. Okay, now we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5, which is a presentation regarding guaranteed maximum pricing and cost allocations for the fabrication laboratory, Business Innovation Center, Arts Incubator, and Smith Alley. Presentation to be given by GSU Project Manager Carrie Thorny, City of Statesboro Project Manager Mandy Cody. We're going to have a little change in that, but I'm going to ask Mandy to quickly introduce that and then ask Vice President Rob Whitaker to come forward.
Thank you, ma'am. As many of you know, this is a very important project in our community, a joint project between university and City of Statesboro that was really determined in 2012 at a community leadership conference to be something significant and important, to move our futures together forward in a very positive direction. So, I'm excited today to get to present to you the final construction plans, guaranteed maximum pricing for this project, moving into the next phase. And Vice President for Business and Administration with Georgia Southern University, Mr. Rob Whitaker is going to carry that presentation for us today. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have on behalf of the staff at the City of Statesboro. Welcome on, Whitaker.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, my first time in front of you all, and I'm honored to be able to come and present the design plans and the guaranteed maximum price for our fabrication laboratory and arts and business incubator. I think Dr. Halliwell has passed on a copy for everybody. I filled the first test. I thought it was important that we at least recognize the group that has been working on this project on behalf of the city, the arts center, as well as the university. We've had a pretty aggressive group led by Mandy from the city, Dr. Dominic Halliwell from Georgia Southern, Tim Chapman from the arts center. They've also had a very good support staff helping them out. Obviously, Robert Cheshire has been with the city now for a while, helping on this project. Dr. Patterson in his role as Vice President for Research and Economic Development. Carrie Thorn, who's in the audience today, she's been our project manager, helping us along the way. And then we have our architect, which is Studio 3 Design Group, and our contractor, which is BAK Construction. This is the current design that we have for the business incubator and fabrication lab, the 62 East Main Street property. The GMP scope right now will include the complete build-out as it's shown here on this document, and will also include storm drain installation, exterior masonry, restoration and sealing, the loading dock. What it will not include are fire extinguishers, carpet base and corner guards, interior signage, voice and data, restroom accessories, other underground utilities, concrete and paperwork, landscaping and irrigation, modular walls, and appliances. Everybody thinks, well, if you don't have those, how do you have a building? And actually, those items that are in red are items that are going to be provided by investment from Georgia Southern University. The items in yellow will be from investment from the City of Statesboro. The green item, the modular walls, will come from the money on the One Georgia Grant and the match that's provided by Georgia Southern. And then the blue item is truly an item right now that we do not have identified as a funding source. The design to kind of give you just a high-level inventory, you've got 22 offices, you've got what they call a clean room and a dirty room. I don't want to be in the dirty room, I'll stay in the clean room. And then we also have the support space for this fabrication and incubator lab. So, the design for the arts incubator, 58 East Main Street. On the top is the first floor plan. In the GMP, we have the stairwell modifications, the ADA restroom upgrades, and studio wall construction. We have the painting in the public spaces only, an electrical rough-in. What is not included on the first floor in the GMP scope right now is the fire extinguishers, voice and data, flooring in the stairwell or studio areas, interior signage, and painting in the studio areas. Again, with the red, red is investment by Georgia Southern. We'll make sure those items are a part of the final project. And the blue is truly an item right now that is not funded in the project. Move to the bottom's diagram, that's the second floor. What we have there is in the GMP right now on the second floor, the stairwell modifications, the structural changes to allow open access, a complete restroom, all wall construction including sheet rock and electrical rough-in. What is not included in the GMP right now is the painting, doors for the studio areas, cabinet for utility sink, and the flooring, as well as fire extinguishers, voice and data, and interior signage. And I kind of flipped the colors there, but the blue on top are truly items that are not currently funded in the project. The items in the red at the bottom are items that Georgia Southern will make the investment on to make sure those are in the project. Kind of give you a high-level inventory, you've got eight studios, you've got an ADA studio, you've got two classrooms, you've got a large studio, and then you have the restrooms necessary for this building. Kind of give you an overall perspective of the total project. If you remember, the EDA grant was almost $1.1 million. We take that $1.1 million and we divide it out between the construction that's going to be in the city campus side of the project, and then you have the fab lab, business, and arts incubator piece. The construction GMP, the 836,792, that's your action item, I think, for today, to approve that GMP. You also have in the project, obviously, design and engineering fees, about $75,000, and other costs that equate to about $103,000 to make up the entire EDA grant of $1.1. I'm going to kind of give you a sense of schedule. I know schedule's important to the president, I know it's important to the mayor. The schedule that's on the left is the schedule that the mayor and the president agreed on several weeks ago. We obviously ran into some GMP issues here in the last few weeks, and we were having to go back and value-engineer some items in and out of the project. And so, as we stand here today, if we get approval on the GMP and we can move forward, we're now at GMP pricing was on 528. You don't have to look at all the numbers, but the ones underlined are probably the most important. With approval today, we can start construction pricing now and have that completed by June 11th, and then construction can begin on June 29th. We've talked to the contractor and everybody on the project. We feel like even though we've lost a week or two here, we're going to be able to make up that time during construction. And so, right now, we've not made any change as it relates to material completion, certificate of occupancy, or the ribbon cutting on the fab lab and the incubators. City campus, obviously, there's no change there on the timeline. Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and I'll open it up to questions. I don't have all the answers, I think we've got plenty of smart people behind me who can help answer some.
I think one of the things that you and I talked about was, once the project is priced out and comes in under the budget, what to do with the money that would be under the budget. And I think that's one thing for council to think about, is to, do we need to go ahead and finish out with doors and paint, et cetera, and interior areas inside? Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes.
You referring to the arts incubator?
Yes.
Well, do we have numbers for that right now?
Right now? Yes, right now, what we have taken out of the project equates to $44,100 worth of work. So, that would be, as a whole project, one item that you could add back in at that point in time. I think what happens is, you've got a guaranteed maximum price, so you know you're going to get everything that has been priced out underneath that guaranteed maximum price. As you go through and you actually do the actual work, you get the actual invoices, and as you realize some savings within the project, then there'll be times at which the working committee can make decisions to start adding things back in. If you do the, if you have a full $44,000, then you can add all the things back into the arts incubator, and then you can start adding other things that were VE'd out during that process. It's $44,100 is the total of the arts incubator, things that have been pulled out as of right now.
And VE is value?
Value engineering.
Is that something that we're talking about? Any other questions for Mr. White?
Rob, did that $44,000, does that include the items that Georgia Southern is providing to the arts incubator, or is that just flooring and painting and those other items?
It's just the items that are not already provided for either by the city or Georgia Southern.
Yeah, it was in blue, has it written?
I believe so. No, the blue items, actually, I'm looking back, the red items are provided by Georgia Southern, and we'll continue to do that. The blue items are truly, right now, not funded through any mechanism. So, appliances...
I can throw that $44,000, yeah.
The 44 would be...
Painting, doors for studios, flooring. Yeah, it's kind of hard to read on this copy.
Correct. The painting, the doors on studio areas, cabinet for the utility sink, and flooring. Yes. And then the painting and studio areas on the first floor.
On the first floor. Well, it was a lot of hard work to get to this point. And we appreciate, and I hope that, you know, let's just be honest, we would probably have hoped for a little more, but I think we maximized the money that we had. And going forward, we can look for ways to enhance the facility, and that's what our intent is to do here at the City of Statesboro, to do that. So, I just want to thank everybody, it was a lot of people working to get us to this point, and I just want to look back 24 months and now be proud of the product that we have. So, I thank you all for all your hard work. Mandy, I thank you especially for the hard work that you did as well.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for Dr. Whitaker? Okay. In that case, we're going to do Item Number 6, which is consideration of a motion in accordance for the memorandum of understanding between Georgia Southern University, the Georgia Southern University Research and Service Foundation, Inc., and the City of Statesboro regarding GSUE zone and innovation incubator to approve final design plans and guaranteed maximum pricing allocations for the fabrication laboratory, Business Innovation Center, Arts Incubator, and Smith Alley, as presented by staff.
So move.
Well, do you want to present the MOU, Mandy, at all?
I'm...
That's the next one, isn't it?
Correct. Do you have anything to say about that? Or, let me just back up, do we have any questions about the MOU that we're about to do?
Wait, I thought we were doing the maximum pricing memorandum of understanding.
We are. I just wanted to see, does any council have any questions about the MOU itself?
The MOU, ma'am, just to be clear, has been previously entered into by Georgia Southern and the City of Statesboro. We did this back in June of 2013, and it states within the terms of that agreement that the city has rights for approval over all improvements and contracts for our city-owned buildings. So, that necessitates the approval of the plans and guaranteed maximum pricing that was shown to be the same.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody understood, because we've got several items, action items, that we need to do, so, excuse me, Phil, I just want to make sure if I was clear on the words that we're doing. Okay. Do I have a motion, Phil?
Yeah, to approve Number 5, sure.
Number 6. Number 5 is a presentation, number 6 is actually approved in...
Aye, go ahead.
Okay, no problem.
Well, I approve of the presentation too, for each of you.
You just got a lot of city council on you. I do. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And I just, I just think, can we just have a round of applause? We actually got this far. All right, Agenda Item 7, consideration of a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for city-owned buildings in Zone Central Business District at 58 and 62 East Main Street and Smith Alley for improvements shown in the staff presentation upon a submission of construction documents demonstrating compliance with all state and local development regulations. Mandy, can you set that up quickly for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning ordinance requires that any properties that have Central Business District be issued approval for design by the city council prior to a building permit. So, we wanted to take care of that today as well and ask for your approval on that motion.
Okay, does anybody have questions for Mandy before I ask for a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for city-owned buildings in Zone Central Business District at 58 and 62 East Main Street?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Agenda Item 8, is consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental rental agreement with the board of regents of the university system in Georgia, by and on behalf of Georgia Southern University for city-owned property, commonly known as 58 East Main Street, for the properties used by Georgia Southern University as a City of Statesboro, Georgia Southern University Fabrication Laboratory, and Business Innovation Center. That's basically, we have two lease agreements that we do with the board of regents on both of those buildings, this is lease agreement one.
Robert has, I'm assuming, Alvin has been knee-deep in that since day one?
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah. And he's good with where we are, I think there were some fine little things with the board of regents, but I think we're there.
We're there.
But we get the board of regents to agree?
They have signed.
They have signed. That was quite the undertaking.
There we go, that was the hardest.
Very thorough organization. All right, do I have a motion for Agenda Item 8?
Motion to authorize mayor to enter into the intergovernmental agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Agenda Item 9, consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the intergovernmental rental agreement with the board of regents of the university system in Georgia, by and on behalf of Georgia Southern University for the city-owned property, commonly known as 62 East Main Street, for the properties used by Georgia Southern University as a City of Statesboro, Georgia Southern University Fabrication Laboratory, and Business Innovation Center.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question about the $44,000, is that something that we need to address today? Is that something that maybe Tim and his staff will volunteer to paint the inside of this, or how do we work that out at this point?
Well, I think...
This is just to move forward, and obviously, those are finished items, so it's going to be a while before the painting.
I think what we've agreed to do in, in theory, is let's see as the project goes forward, how much money is actually out there to use, and then we'll look at all of our resources. I mean, you know, we're going to pull from everything we have, because every penny we save is a penny we can spend doing something with the project. So, as the committee moves forward, I think we're all encouraged to pull whatever resources we have to paint, to floor, to do whatever we need to do. So, have we agreed, guys, in kind that that's what we're going to do? So...
So, we get the Howard, over 10% discount you can apply?
You don't even know. We're going to work it.
Use your airline miles, something like that?
And I mean, my hope is, before the end of this meeting, we hear some sort of work going on over there. So, to meet this time schedule, but...
Donovan, he's got a sledgehammer in his car.
Yeah, exactly. All right, well, thank you, guys, that will wrap that up. And like I said, it's my hope that, starting in a couple of weeks, we'll begin to get, I'm going to ask that, that y'all come forth just to report as to what progress is, you know, accounts, but at least Mandy can give us a report as we go forward on the build out, that's for you to talk.
Thank you to everybody on the second row there.
Appreciate it.
This is a big day for downtown, we'll look back on it and realize it probably in a couple of years. So, thank you very much. Is there some third row? Oh, sorry, Kay.
And we got some background.
I bet we just said the whole right, son.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to, as again, not sweep... All right, Agenda Item 11, is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-13, a resolution authorizing the City of Statesboro to make applications to the fiscal year 2016 Tourism Product Development Grant in the amount of $15,000 on behalf of the Avery Center, Avery Arts Center, excuse me, for utilization in the arts incubator portion of the City of Statesboro, Georgia Southern University Fabrication Laboratory, and Business Innovation Center. Okay, Mandy, name this to Mandy, should it?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a grant application that was brought to me by Tim Chapman and his team at Avery Arts Center. They wish to move forward to apply for this funding to contribute to the cost of finishing out the arts incubator that we just discussed as part of the fab lab. Under the rules of this particular grant, only a municipal or county government can act as the lead agency. So, what you have before you for Item 11 is pursuant to our grant policy, which is a resolution that would authorize the city staff to submit the application documents for the grant. And Item 12 is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the arts center that lists the particular responsibilities of both the city's board. The match and the ver associated with the grant would be provided by the staff of the arts center. They would be responsible for providing us with all documentation, receipts, and any other necessary items to file and administer with the particular grant.
Tim, did you want to say anything about the grant?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you. We are very excited about the second phase. We're part of, we've been working on a capital campaign for the last year and a half, so we've already generated also about $40,000 that can be allocated to this project. So, we've already created the match for this particular grant. The funds for this grant will help us to do things that were not included in the scope of the work that was outlined earlier for you, so that, so we have, basically, this gives us the opportunity to put water in artist's studio spaces, stains in artist's studio spaces, so that they can, so we can maximize the opportunity of renting those spaces to local artists and work during the work. That's the scope of the work of the grant.
So, you're saying we can't use your money to put up doors?
We can use money to put up doors if necessary, absolutely. We're going to make that happen, in fact, I'm sure, there's many people that will be happy to paint that facility out, too.
You got an old t-shirt you can put on?
Yeah. And I'll get a sledgehammer, too, that'll be good.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Chapman?
Feel free to apply for as many of these type grants as you want.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay. Do I have a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-13?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Agenda Item 12, consideration of a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between the Avery Center for the Arts and the City of Statesboro regarding fiscal year 2016 Tourism Product Development Agreement from the Georgia Department of Economic Development, Tourism Division, and the Georgia Council for the Arts. Mandy, are you to address this, or is Tim?
I just, that's a memorandum of understanding that outlines the responsibilities of the arts center and the city in regards to that grant application. It's required of our policies as well as the terms of the implications.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I am going to have to leave a little early. Is there anyone who would address 16 and 17 before you do that?
Well, it's going to be quite the, how much time do you have?
About that time. 16 going to be long?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, it wouldn't be long.
I think...
Yeah.
I think alcohol is going to go pretty quick. It's going to be a month or so, I think we can be... I think we need that, let's go ahead and do the alcohol. Administer this up, if the votes that, go ahead and come forward. They're going to involve these alcohol administrative hearings. Does anybody have a sign up?
Yes, ma'am, everybody is. Mr. Robert Danger from Kmart is having surgery this morning, and it's a thing with him, I would already have been met with him.
Okay.
And we will be with Mr. Melendez from the jalapeno, I just do not see him here. We have signed documents on all three, you can report as well as we can.
Okay, I'm going to read this stuff real quickly that comes in front, I'll kind of short it up. Now, we'll move on to considering whether certain persons or entities at home alcoholic beverage licenses issued by the city and valid in Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Statesboro regarding alcoholic beverages, and if so, what sanctions are appropriate under the ordinance. These cases are being brought, Department of Public Safety gets several license holders. Before we proceed with these cases, I'd like to establish general procedures these cases will follow. Rules on the rev... Rules on the relevancy and invisibility of evidence and whether to hear argument in all of the points of order, including who shall address counsel shall be made by the presiding officer pursuant to the authority granted to presiding officer in section two-two of the ordinance given to the city of Statesboro in line of perpance to this hearing. Both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee have the right to be represented by counsel, the right to present evidence and cross-examine the evidence presented, presented by the opposing party. Finally, both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee enjoy the right to appeal any decision here today to the Superior Court of Superior. Anybody who was speaking or giving evidence regarding these administrative hearings, please stand. Enrange right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give here today shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we will start right here with, uh, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and who you're with.
Uh, I'm, my name is Thomas Patel. I have a Zipin Go and eighteen channel road, eighteen zero three channel, six for Georgia.
Okay. Have you, uh, have you have been duly sworn, yes or no?
Uh...
You just took a no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Have you reached an agreement with the city of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge?
Yes.
Can I have that, please? Thank you. Did you sign a newspaper that I'm holding in my hand stipulated that the entity you represent did indeed violate the city of Statesboro alcohol ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have anything that you would like to say to counsel at this time regarding this violation?
Yeah, after that violation, I've been taking a little bit measures on that. Uh, I've been guiding my employees to go to the tips which city of Statesboro provided, and also making myself, uh, involved in it to make sure this thing never happened again.
Okay, does counsel have any questions for Mr. Patel? Okay. Do I have a motion from counsel finding that Zipin Go number ten violated the city of Statesboro alcohol ordinance on April sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is the first violation, counsel may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
As it regards Big Kmart, do you have anything to say about that before we ask for a motion?
Uh, we did meet with them, went through the case, and it's, uh, agreed to allow alcohol.
Okay. Uh, and it looks from this that they have indeed reached an agreement with the city of Statesboro Department of Public Safety?
Yes, ma'am. It's been signed alcohol, and, uh, if we're not per procedure, having done this one, we'd be here and we'd want to make sure that y'all did that.
Okay, do y'all have any questions regarding this, this issue that's here? Okay. Do I have a motion from counsel finding that Big Kmart violated the city of Statesboro alcohol ordinance on April sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen?
So move.
So, do I have a discussion?
Uh, Big Kmart, did it, Kmart?
Uh, I think it's the same Kmart, it just goes back to the Kmart.
Yes.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, y'all getting together. Opposed? Alright, motion? As this is the first violation, counsel may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation?
I have a motion for a warning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and finally, can you speak, please speak to the, um, offense lodged against El Jalapeno's?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, that's in a joint operation with the police department and fire department reference an occupancy violation. Um, the occupancy of El Jalapeno's, maximum occupancy is two hundred and eighty. Um, with surveillance and then bringing, uh, some additional resources in, they were counted. On February twenty-first, the occupancy was counted as being five hundred and four, well above the two hundred and eighty that is permitted. Uh, we moved forward, documented the, uh, offense, and have met with the owner, Mr. Gomez, or the licensee. And he has entered into a motion to enter guilty plea for that violation, uh, before y'all today.
What date, Rob?
Uh, February twenty-first.
Okay, so obviously you reached agreement with Mr. Gomez?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, do I have a motion from counsel finding that El Jalapeno's violated the city of Statesboro alcohol ordinance on February twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen?
So move.
So move. Do the question.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess there's discussion, Rob. So again, the current ordinance we have right now, a violation of occupancy is one of the provisions that is a violation of the alcohol.
That, that's correct. It's with it being a life safety, uh, co-issue. Um, we did forward this entire case file over to, um, Alvin with, under his hat of prosecutor municipal court. Um, there has not been any movement there. However, we did prefer that over for criminal charges also.
And I guess when you do a criminal charge, when you do... When we write this up, I, I guess I just view, I view that as, uh, it's a violation of the establishment. It's kinda getting back to that thing we're talking about though. It's a business license sort of thing, not necessarily an alcohol thing. I know that's, I know this is a mechanism that we have, and that's one thing that you talked about, having a mechanism to kinda get someone's attention. And this does do that. I guess one of my concerns is that I have to see this as a business. If this happened at Walmart, if this happened at Waffle House, there, there's not a mechanism to book someone or to, to get onto someone for an alcohol violation if they were overcrowded. And then this is the first one, and this is the first one we've done, I think, for a long time. And this also is coming kind of before we're redoing our license. And, uh, not since prolonged discussion on that, but maybe between now and the next time. I just, I see, I view this as a, your business did something wrong, not necessarily you did something wrong with your license. Some people say, well, it's a privilege to have an alcohol license and blah, blah.
I, I would point out that if this were, you gave some examples of other businesses, the people would not be in there crammed in like sardines if there were not more alcohol.
Well, now, you know, I don't know about that. I'll give you an example. When Georgia Southern, you know, too many people get into Hanner. And you gotta shut the doors if there's enough people there to do it. I mean, I do think that people overcrow when it's not just a club. I do.
And, and I see your point there.
And we have issues with that, so...
With Hanner, that's not something that the city can control.
I'm just saying, there, there are examples where there is overcrowding, where there's not alcohol at all. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I do think it goes back to, it is a privilege to hold a license, and when you're held to a higher standard of behavior, if you have one, I don't know, but that's, we can talk about that more essentially.
Well, I just, I think the key here is, this is, this is the only opportunity Rob had to fix the problem. I think that's what y'all, that's what y'all told us one time before. This was your only mechanism to go any further. And as far as I know, if I remember this case correctly, he was warned a couple of hours before he got that. Is that, I mean, I can, I was pretty sure I didn't see no leaves, he was on leaves. He's like, yeah, well, they told us, and then it was, it was a lot to let it get. So he knew beforehand, hey, this could be him.
And I, I believe this mechanism may be the correct one, and I'll tell you why I say that. Since that point, he has changed his business practice, um, as far as what he's doing late into the evenings. He is focused on becoming more of a restaurant and not a club, because he wants, as he said, sell good tacos, et cetera. Um, and he's not had that problem by going after and defining himself of what he wanted to be.
Okay, I guess my only thing would be, is, you know, and I know you started to sign the documents, uh, that mean maybe these, these type of things go through criminal court first, and then, uh, once they're not guilty. But you said it's hung up in criminal court.
We forwarded that information over and, uh...
Yeah, just handle that.
There has not been an accusation gone on.
Maybe it's just something in, you know, between now and the next time we discuss the alcohol, I think this is a good example of something.
Okay. Alright, uh, I've asked for a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, as this is the first violation, counsel may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation?
Can I have a question first?
Sure.
Uh, what's the occupancy limit?
Two, uh, two eighty.
Two eighty, and they had how many people?
Let me look that back up. It's five.
Five hundred and some change.
Yes, ma'am, five oh eight.
Five oh eight.
Yeah, five oh four.
What did they have, the Roman songs played?
It must have been good.
Twenty-five, sent to people shots.
What was, um, I mean, what, what brought so many people in? I mean, they have family, they have karaoke, you know?
Promoter group.
Yeah, it was a promotion.
Put together a charter. So where, when they worked some of the promoter groups go, remember, let him address it. Said, we're gonna bring in X amount of people, and that's the end of it. It's a lot more than that.
Yeah.
True. Yeah.
And you say he has changed his, uh, business model?
We met immediately after that.
Two hundred and sixty.
Uh, he's gotten out of having any promoters come in and do any, uh, promotions that bring in such crowds. He wants to focus on being a restaurant, delivering good food.
Okay. Do I have a motion from counsel as regards punishment for the violation?
Um, for first instance, I make a motion for Jalapeno's to be given one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen. Resolution authorizes city of Statesboro to make application for a tie-up discretionary grant fund from Department Transportation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the transportation investment generating economic recovery funding, um, by the Department of Transportation. You all may remember a couple of weeks ago, you gave approval pursuant to our grant policy for the staff to file a pre-application, and we did so by that timeline. Our next timeline to file is for the final application materials, which is checked out in the prior. We have security services, Department of Regional Commission to assist with preparing that narrative and that application document, as well as EMC to do some divine and cost estimating for us. Um, as of last night, EMC gave new construction estimates, um, for the South Main corridor to go from Timm Street, Nat Flaming, to the intersection of the four mains, here's the Allen Bank. Carry that at the streetscape that's currently reflecting on East Main here in front of the courthouse of sun blocks, payers, and street furniture. The, um, landscaping, all of that atmosphere, if you will, would be developed on the South Main corridor in that area. The construction alone was about four point one million dollars in the EMC estimate. We also met with Georgia Power, Frontier, uh, Northland Cable, and the other private utilities, and got estimates to relocate and bury their lines that appear along that corridor. And staff has put together estimates for enhancement of our water sewer, natural gas, and stormwater utilities in that area to upgrade and locate as needed for that particular product. All together, the cost estimates are somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen point three million dollars. That would be, um, if approved, if this resolution were approved by you all today, that neighborhood would be the application amount that we would submit on Friday evening. Uh, technically, no match is required by the city of Statesboro for this work, uh, so you're designated as a rural area by the Department of Transportation. However, traditionally, um, the match at three point five non-grant dollars to every one dollar of grant has been, um, granted the money that was applied for, if you're able to remember that to there. So three point five to every one dollar of grant dollars, based in what's traditionally when they were, um, funded. I've looked at our capital improvement program, as well as Frontier Brand, ABC, various communities that we've looked at, um, and also come up with projects that we have allocated in those funds. And also have the new tax allocation district, and some lines that are expected to be generated from that, um, over the long term. So what we need today to discuss, so we know how to do it at the stack level and with the Regional Commission as well as EMC, is one, um, consideration whether you all want us to submit, uh, on Friday or not. And two, at what funding level, and three, what match level, depending on two weeks to go. I will say that, um, we are giving our best efforts on a very short period of time with this grant application. My expectations are not extremely high. Only about six percent of these applications across the country are funded, and we are not as prepared as we would like to be, really did our best before. But my intentions are that if you all want to submit, we will, and our hope will be then to sit down with Department of Transportation and give a really strong deep briefing on what we need to do moving forward to take advantage of this tighter grant. This is the first tighter grant that, um, I or anyone on our team have, have put together.
Now, I will follow up with Mandy a little bit on this, that the county is also submitting one of these grants. They did it last year. Um, they're doing it for I sixteen. They know that we're putting out an application. We endorsed theirs, they endorsed ours. Uh, theirs is gonna be far more comprehensive. They've already been through the process once and been denied, and, and were told what they could have done better, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we don't honestly expect to proceed this grant, but you've got to start submitting them and learning how to do it better, and what you need to do, and, and that kind of thing. So this is really as much as anything, an exercise in learning. Would that be accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
But you gotta start somewhere. So the county's okay with us submitting, and we're obviously very okay with them submitting, and we're supporting their submission as well, so...
How much, how much money do we already have allocated to all these different projects? So we can kind of assign it to this project?
We have about one point nine million dollars in CIP, CIP funding over the next several years. Not, you know, not the immediate fiscal year or even next year without, say, twenty twenty-four improvements. And the railroad at three one thousand sixty-seven, that crossing, as well as we have some improvement money allocated up for West Main. And I shifted that by being that name from South Main in exchange for West Main, but these application processes. That puts us at about one point eight. Um, we estimated in our CIP that we would have about three hundred thousand dollars in G dot contribution, but that's an estimation and speculation at this point, to my knowledge, if you can confirm that G dot. Which is honestly one of the weaknesses that we have been toward on Friday, is that we don't have outside resources firmly committed to this application, to the only that starts up. So, about one point eight, one point nine million in projects, uh, right now. We do have the resources of the America's Best Communities Grant, which is right now about fifty thousand dollars towards planning activities. And then the tax allocation district, assuming a full development and full contribution by our friends in the county and for education, is expected to generate about eleven million dollars in tax benefit.
Is it over what number?
Over about a twenty.
Is it, is it better to, since we're submitting this, no one going into it in spite of the best thing? Is it better to submit a smaller, very easy-to-grasp proposal than a fourteen million dollar, we're gonna read you one mile, and various options, and fix intersections? Or is it better for a big project, you gotta, maybe it'll give us a little bit of something?
I think they have a grant.
That's normal.
Yeah, it's a ten or twelve, fifteen million dollars.
I'm just wondering, you know, you do a lot of those big ones, and all of a sudden, there's three million left over.
The briefing that, that's a good question, Houston. The briefing that the Department of Transportation and the district box put out encouraged applicants to move forward with what they call transformative projects. They did not want us to, um, think small, they wanted us to think very big as far as economic development regeneration and, and that's what I...
Is there any chance that they will say, you've got, this project has four parks, you're moving forward, we'll fund one. Or is it an all or nothing?
Not what I can find in my research. It seemed to be an all or nothing, um, sort of deal. Now, what I did find in my research was that the transformative projects were big, they were visionary. They took several rounds in the application process. They generally had lobbying efforts stood forward by not only city representatives, but some of those, some actual lobbies that were acting on behalf of the city. And it took some, some energy over, over a number of years to, to move forward.
Kind of any other questions at this time? Okay, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen...
Okay, do I have a consideration of a motion to approve a resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifteen?
That should approve the tiger grant.
No, there needs, the note says we need an amount.
Need a, a, a level of funding that you wish to apply for, as well as a match that I can commit in the application.
Well, in the match, what can we commit or do? One point nine? We use that as a match?
We can, yes ma'am, we have one point nine in our CIP, and then we have the TAD dollars that are expected to be generated that are on your mark at this time, those two matches.
And as far as the match is concerned, is that something we have to have all the projects, or is it something we can do in the course of the project?
Something we could do in the course of the project.
You're asking for fourteen million, we need to have round numbers like one point four or two point eight or a percentage thereof, or is it that? Like, is it maybe better to go, we can get ten percent, we can get twenty percent, or twenty-five percent?
You, you tell me now, then I'll, I'll do the calculations with you.
Well, I get that, but what from a percentage standpoint are they looking for? Forget the actual number that it equates to right this time.
For every, for every one dollar of grant money, we have to, we, the winning grant that traditionally provided three point five dollars. I'll, I'll read this to you.
So for every three point five dollars we commit, they, a dollar, or is it vice versa?
This is all the rural areas.
Okay.
All the rural areas require no match, funded projects have historically averaged a three point five to one ratio of other funds to tiger funds.
So if you back that three point five one up over the fourteen million, what is the number that we can commit?
That number is four point one million.
Okay, of which one point nine is already in the CIP?
Yes ma'am.
Well, now, when you say four point one million, now, um, that's gonna get you four point one million plus the fourteen, so that'll end up being an eighteen million dollar budget, put it that way.
So four point one would get you up to fourteen?
Uh, no, but four, four point one will give you fourteen million dollars in match, so that makes it an eighteen million dollar budget.
So if we only want fourteen million, then we don't have to commit?
Then I think we can commit about three point two. Cause then three point two.
You're right.
Times three point five, plus three point two, puts in about fourteen four.
So we would commit three point two. That's right.
Did I do that right?
Okay, I, I need another dollar.
I, I, I see it the other way, I mean, that's just two, two ways of talking. To me, if you commit three point two, that means you're only committing to a ten million dollar project, unless I'm hearing the way she's describing it wrong.
You gotta add the three point two you put in, yeah, three, three point two times three point five, so there, plus three you put in.
So you need to, you need to provide thirty percent of the money they give you on top, not thirty percent of the proposals. A proposal be a fourteen million dollar proposal, you, you need to do three percent of that.
That's true, but.
If you're, if you're gonna ask for fourteen million, you gotta put up three point two again.
Right.
Just one second.
May, there.
I, I don't see how to try, because then that's only eleven million, you're only getting eleven million from them.
And then you have the three point two, and we match it to give it up to fourteen million. Are you saying that the fourteen is gonna be the grant, or the fourteen's inclusive of the match? That's the question.
The fourteen point three million is the total estimated budget.
That's the total estimated budget, how much money would, how much money is coming total development out of that portion for you? The whole thing?
It could, yes ma'am, fourteen, fourteen point three is the total estimated budget. That's, that would be our project, our value of our project that we would put forward in the application. Of that fourteen point three, we needed to target, how much are we gonna put forward, and how much are we gonna ask? Eight dollars.
If we put three point two million dollars and we get a three and a half times match, the match would be eleven point two million, if we put in three point two, eleven point two from the tiger fund, that makes it a fourteen point four million dollar budget.
So it doesn't show us the four eleven million?
Three point, yes, they're asking for eleven point two, and we're putting in three point two. Of which one point nine is our expense.
Or we could say that we don't want to put in any and give us all the money.
Yeah, or we could do that.
So that's the thing, you can go from zero to three point one up.
Remember what you're doing, it's pretty much a Hail Mary anyway.
His first year, it is.
Yeah.
Who would be over advisor?
Absolutely.
If it's Hail Mary, say we give them four million? Because of the TAD money and with some other spots and other things in there, it could be. Yeah, they got one point nine committed, they only, they only talking two point one, Vance on his head, he's gonna kick in something more. Steve's smiling, he's throwing in something, yeah?
Well, if they just conserved and then put two million towards it. And that one point nine committed.
I stay conservative, because some of that money that we have committed is over.
No, it's, it's over the course of our CIP, which is the issue.
When you say conservative, you mean, you mean one point nine? Either the two or the three, if we got some TAD dollars coming in, hopefully.
We will have TAD dollars coming in. We have some projects coming in.
We don't have TAD all the way.
No, we do not.
Motion to approve a tiger fund application with a two million dollar match from taken from various existing CIP project, projects.
Approved, uh, a motion to, uh, second.
Do you want to repeat that by Mandy, what we just did?
Yes, ma'am, uh, Councilman Boy made a motion that could, uh, Councilman Britt to approve the application for tiger at fourteen point three million dollar total project, but then two million city states per match.
Thank you, do you have any discussion?
The only discussion is if she's saying it needs to be three, because you know, they're gonna read the, read and go, yeah, you're not in the ballpark.
We don't know that it needs to be three, overall grant requires no match.
Requires no match, how competitive are we?
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
I'll remember, at least it's a number, if they're gonna deny it anyway, they can give us a gauge on where that, where that number needs to be figured, so I, I see what you have to do.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Mandy. Consideration of a motion to extend the contract with South Asian Civil to include additional paving and traffic calming measures on Gordon Street and Thomas Street in order to maximize full funding of the two thousand thirteen community development block grant.
Councilman Boy asked us to be the grant, who sounds to have me on. Um, mayor, we have received in twenty thirteen community development block grant amount of five hundred thousand dollars. We contributed in our match and language for that particular project of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to update our commitments and our costs, um, leave us with approximately one hundred thousand dollars in funds that have not been expended on that project, and we have contracted out everything that we need to do. And looking at maximizing the benefit of the five hundred thousand dollars from Department of Community Affairs and the work that still needed to be recommended in that particular area, some traffic calming measures are recommended and requested, as well as some speed bumps. We have had this estimated out at the price of sixty-two thousand seventy dollars. When the contractor company engaged in this project, we would ask the council to support that change order in the amount of sixty-two thousand seventy dollars to perform those traffic calming measures and so on, and take advantage of this particular funding source.
Do I have any questions for Mandy? Okay. Then do I have a consideration of a motion to extend the contract with South Asian Civil to include additional paving and traffic calming measures on Gordon Street and Thomas Street in order to maximize the full funding of the two thousand thirteen CDBG grant?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, then the item sixteen is a first reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh six, and I want council to notice that we've changed the wording a little bit in how we're doing this, before we used to ask for a first reading and a motion to approve, and that made no sense, since we had a separate reading that we would do, so from now on, we have ordinances and things like that come forth, there'll be a first reading and a public hearing, and then there'll be a separate reading and an ask for motion to pass the ordinance, so uh, I don't know why I was thinking of that way, but it seemed to make more sense, so. Do I have, um, so obviously, we will not be voting on passing this ordinance today, but we will have a public hearing regarding it. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh six?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public hearing of proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh six is open. Uh, this is something that was worked on by Ms. Sue, and Robert's agreeing with this, so Sue, um, I'll ask you just to briefly introduce the elements, Robert, follow up with some initial discussion, okay? Any talk, can I pull that back, Robert?
Um, this is, as I said, is a great, um, back in two thousand one, there was a resolution that was passed, it said it'd be more such things, some pre amendments. Um, what you have before you, it is a working document, it's not a real deal. So we wanted to get, probably to get into, um, what you like or some comments, um, concerns that you have. So again, this is just a working document for you to, um, get to, um, drive sales, um, tent sales, smart sales, um, what you think is on, there's, in our regional headquarters, that there are no specific guidelines, but very, very vague. So over the years since two thousand one, we had issues in the past, and we struggled through them, and tried to make a lot of decisions, so we probably would try to put something in line with the, the same word, definition of procedures that we use in the, the venture. So again, this is a working document, this is not a real deal, so we, in fact, we'll, 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 we'll try to get something in the book.
Okay, and Robert, I'm gonna ask you to address, you know, what really brought this to the forefront, and where we saw that we had gaps and, and problems, and, and needed to, to, to really come up with a document that would provide a good working document and a, and a format by which people could conduct business.
Yeah, I think it really came to light during the recent months, when, uh, the Ellis Open Air Market, and probably even as far back as, um, Mr. Gerald, I believe, with LND produce, we had, y'all remember what we went through last year with that? And I, I think it's important that, uh, that I differentiate between what I'm gonna call the temporary vendor permit, uh, that we're talking about, that the ordinance is referring to today, the OTC, or what we refer to a lot of times, is still referred to as a business license. Business license is, um, it's really an occupational tax certificate, it's, it's not a license, uh, state regular, that's what they have to get you with. Very specific businesses that could be taxed as such. The other items that company that Sue was referring to are your temporary ones, which are your garage sales, your, your book sales in Georgia Southern at the end of the semester, and the vine goes back, it's that type of thing. But then you have something like an LND produce, it starts out seeming temporary, or you have the Ellis Open Air Market, Flea Market, I guess what y'all are referring to it as, and it seems temporary in a sense, but then us and staff didn't know how to address it because there's no definition of what's temporary. So that's what we're really trying to put in front of you, is we want to differentiate between what's temporary, you know, a one or two day type event, and what is a business, which is what, when you start getting into the OTC, which has even more standards within, which is your zoning, your math, and stuff, it's starting to become a true, what you consider a business. So the ordinance you have referring to today is what we, uh, like Ms. Sue said, it's really a first attempt, because we're looking at two different places and trying to put something together. We've got some other languages that we'd like to add, so this isn't the, the final one, but at least we had some input from y'all. As council made, councilmen, they were able to even finalize this. So this is the temporary vendor that we're looking at, anything else we go under, the state, not regulated, but the state, uh, what the state would consider the OTC, and what you would consider the, the charge that taxing on it. So, to clarify what we're looking at today, so really, it's really the open air market from the Ellis, and I know they're here as we get into the public hearing, or we're, we're gonna wanna talk about theirs. And then what I'd like staff to do, which, uh, it was the clerk's office, engineering, planning, development, where the group looked at it, and I'd like to, for y'all to stipulate, what are the main features in here, in the graph that you had in front of council, to see if it's gonna, for example, the Ellis Open Air Market here, what you, what they're wanting to do under this, or would we consider them a, a business, which fall into the, the OTC requirements, which are more standard.
Where's the opening, Robert?
It's the, uh, south side drive.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it was called the open air market.
Okay, so I, it's a, if, would you like to explain some of the tenants real quickly, or what, what you came up, which establishes something is temporary and something that's not? And then I'll ask the folks that wanna come speak to the ordinance itself, or what they want of the ordinance to go forward, okay?
Yeah, Mandy, would you like to do that, or?
I'd be happy to. What, what this does, um, mayor, councilwoman Robert said, just really looking for some, some guidance here as to what is really temporary and what is permanent, because and I don't wanna make this about, um, the Ellis situation, although they have brought some of this to light, this has been going, a struggle for staff to permit, and also to enforce on the co-side of things for my time here. But this defines a temporary vendor or a temporary business, um, as anything that is selling out of a vehicle, trailer, tent, other senior temporary structure, or in the open air. And it would limit that activity, um, to no more than thirty days, in the sake of theory. And then it would limit that vendor to no more than three of those permits per year. And it would limit a particular property to no more than three temporary permits per year. So it limits, it, it defines, um, some durations that would be acceptable, and that's really one of the highlights of the struggles in reviewing these applications, is where, where does the line cross between a temporary activity and a permanent activity? So I'll give you two examples to think about. One is the seasonal sales of pumpkins, tr- Christmas trees that we know come in. They, they regularly come, in the fact that they come at their season, uh, but they stay for thirty, sixty, ninety days. Is that a temporary business? Because it happens on an annual basis, but it happens for two and three nights at a time. Another example is, is an open air market. They are only open on Friday or Saturday, maybe both. So they're not open a full week, but they're open every week on Friday and Saturday. So that's a regular activity that is happening on a scheduled basis, such as that, is that temporary or is that permanent? How should we treat that? If you treat those, um, situations as a permanent business, as Robert says, under the occupational tax certificate, then zoning and life safety, building codes, other, um, regulations that just had, are triggered for compliance, which then requires those establishments to have a certain number of parking spaces, handicap provisions, some of that has to be paid, restroom facilities, signage, ingress, egress, all of those things which have to be compliant with any other business that construction opens up on a five, six, seven day, the sort of basis. So at what point do we hold businesses to that particular standard, which can be costly, um, and, and discourage certain business activities in our community? On the other hand, we have heard from some of the council over the years that businesses that are not held to that standard don't necessarily represent the business community aesthetically, um, as best as we would like to see in city states, right? Um, so what is that balance moving forward? And this puts, this particular draft puts timelines out there for discussion. I know more than thirty days, and no, no more than three permits per year. And if you hit a certain size of activity, and we use, um, ten thousand square feet as a lot size, which is your standard lot size for commercial activity, if you get to that or larger, and you have more than two consecutive days, and you need to have some sort of restroom facilities available for frequency frequent your activity, vendor, and also, uh, you know, water hose, for just, so if you get so far, you can be able to address that. Proper sanitation, things of that nature. So, um, this is, this is, again, has just really been a struggle with trying to assist those, or trying to engage in these activities, how should we regulate this? How should we enforce it? And what is the guidance, I see, council, meaning for, on, on how to define temporary? And where do we consider that that temporary activity has moved over into a more prominent business establishment, should be held to the same development standards? And expenses involved in the development standard, more prominent.
Um, I have a question, uh, people who sell pumpkins, they say they come in for thirty, sixty, ninety days, uh, they have to apply for a temporary business license, permit, to sell them, correct?
Well, council, and that's been our practice, so we do not have, uh, re, uh, ordinance on books that would actually hold them to that standard. So for, if someone did come in. So for, if someone did come in and wanted to sell pumpkins for 30, 60, or 90 days, I would at best be able to ask the code officers to go out and tell them to come down to the first floor and pay their $35 per day fee. That fee has been established by the city. But other than that, I don't have a standard or a regulation to enforce upon that person.
We don't have a clear definition.
We don't have a clear definition. We don't have a clear requirement that a permanent be secured. We have a practice, a requirement.
Yes.
Would this address the issues we talked about on the, you say, give a look at the public?
Okay. I'm looking at the public hearing. I know that there's some folks that want to come speak to the proposed ordinance. Y'all go ahead and come forward. And state your name, address, age, just kidding. And pull that mic down so I can hear you, okay?
My name is Stephanie Ellis, and I live in Hope, you like it, on Highway 25, 640 Highway 25. I am the owner and operator of Ellis Open Market. My family owns the property located at 1695 North Side Drive and pays property taxes on said property every year where my business is conducted. The operation of Ellis Open Market provides money for my family, which is normally used to buy groceries. It's not a lot of money. I mean, it's really not. Those groceries are bought locally, contributing to our local economy. The operation of Ellis Open Market also provides an opportunity for our customers to make money, which they need to pay electric bills and to buy groceries for their families locally, contributing further to our local economy. The current proposal I've read over would not allow me to conduct business. And my attorney, Scott Brandon, from, forward from today, will be speaking for me on this matter. He does, however, have a conflict this morning, and he has had to be in Heinzville for another case. I also understand he's requesting, as of yesterday evening, he's requesting further information and has asked me to ask you to table this matter as far as a decision until he can be here to speak. Additionally, I've been advised that it's within my rights to ask for a temporary permit to conduct business, to operate. I've been shut down since February. Even though I have complied with everything I've been asked to do, I've still been shut down since February. I have folks calling me every day, every day. I need to pay my light bill. I need to buy diapers for my baby. I need to buy formula. I need somebody to help me help them. I'm doing the best that I can. The proposal as it stands will not allow me to do business.
So let me, let me ask you, Ms. Ellis, because I don't know, okay?
Okay.
So I'm just, this is points of information for me. Is this something that you would want to do every weekend?
We close down when the weather gets really cold. We try to let people operate up too close to Christmas to make Christmas money. However, the provisions to, to limit them to three permits. Say, say a child has a birthday in March and they need to make money for that. And they have something, they need to pay a light bill in the summer. Light bills get high in the summer. They need to make money for that. And then they need to make school clothes. Well, that's their three permits. What happens when Christmas comes? Well, they've used their three permits. They can't make Christmas money. That, that prices, that shuts them out of making Christmas money. They have things that they've gathered up. They're willing to sell the coat that their kid needs to be wearing in order to make Christmas money for them, or the coat that they need to be wearing so that they can buy their child a Barbie doll for Christmas. But because they've used their three permits, they can't sell. That's not fair.
How is, how is your business set up?
We have defined vendor spaces. We have, and I actually have a lot plan I'd be glad to give you after the meeting. Everything I've been asked to do, I've complied with. Like the parking, I have defined asphalt parking. My vendor retail space, the 500 square feet, a parking space for every 500 retail square feet. I mean, I have that. I have a handicap parking space defined. I have a handicap porta potty sitting ready to go as soon as I get permission to set it. I've done everything I've been asked to do.
I guess what I'm asking is tell me, how do you operate? I mean, are you lease spaces to folks?
I do.
So explain how your business model works for me.
I have my phone number on the lot. People call me, and really, it's by word of mouth. People call me and they say, hey, Ms. Ellis, do you have a spot this weekend? And I'll say yes or no. Usually I do. I usually only rent probably maybe 10 to 10 to 12 spaces. I have 16 available. I rent 10 to 12 per weekend. And they'll show up with their stuff packed in a car. They'll unload and they'll set up their tables. And they'll pay me $15 and they'll sell their stuff. And they'll clean up their mess and they'll go home. And they'll make their grocery money for the week.
Now, Mandy, let me ask you. Under this ordinance, who would be getting the temporary vendor permit? Would Ms. Ellis as manager of that property? Or would the folks that come and rent the permit get it?
Both.
Under this draft?
That's not fair. They can't afford that. My vendors-
That would be, they can't, every week they would have to do $35.
$35 every week, and that's absolutely not fair. They can't afford to pay the city. I did a draft, okay? Like a vendor number one comes two weeks, vendor number two comes four weeks. Vendor, I did just a random smattering of 20 vendors, saying four came four weeks and two came two weeks. Just a random smattering of vendors based on my business history. I ended up making, at the end of four weeks, I made $425 and the city makes $700 off of permits.
If Ms. Ellis were set up like Flea Market folks down the road, would it be the same thing? Do those people that go, would they have that Flea Market still pay the temporary vendor permit?
No, ma'am. Because that is one business operation, but then all the development requirements of the city of St. Jamesburg, and then pay not only occupational tax annually, but also pay the other fees and taxes that are associated with having a permanent business, such as sales tax, such as property tax. Those are handled very differently in this particular situation.
My family pays property tax on our property.
They paying property tax, $200?
Yes, they are.
What's the difference?
The difference is in these sorts of cases, that they are not developing that permit to the standard that's required in the regulations for the city and for the state. And they are not paying annual occupational tax or D to the city. And to the best of my knowledge, they're not paying the sales tax in the states.
There's no sell, I have an accounting degree. There's no sales tax on the rental fees.
There are sales tax that would be associated with the items that the vendors are selling.
That's the vendors, not me.
Well, I understand Jerry, Jenny's supposed to help you. We're trying to make them do that, Jerry, get I helped you on.
Well, councilman, under the regulations that we currently have, if you're going to operate on a permanent basis, then yes, or those are the regulations that are in place for the city.
Are they asked for, are they asked for something that's temporary?
Well, they're asking, they're asking for a part of the week, every week. So do that.
That's one of the things that we're trying to figure out.
Is every Saturday a temporary thing?
What counts as permanent, what counts as temporary? And if you have one, what are the requirements that go along with that? And a permanent, what are the requirements for that? And I think that's, that's the big discussion, Ms. Ellis, and that's why, you're in the middle, unfortunately. But, you know, we've got to, this board's got to determine what the definitions are. And I think Mr. Jenny brought a lot of that up. And then, I guess we've got about three places kind of bringing it up, what we defined it as.
We have. And we have a number of vendors who come in on a regular basis. The books, sales, for example, beginning and end of every quarter at North Southern. Couple guys come in and they buy and sell textbooks. They have their regular slots. Specifically, they come in maybe a week, they have written permission of property owners. They're in a commercial district. They pay their $35 a day and they get an issue of permit. They're here maybe a week. Again, then we have the seasonal sales. The guy comes in and sells the Christmas trees 30, 60 days at a stretch. Well, he's just finished selling pumpkins at the same spot. And for Halloween and Thanksgiving. So now he's here two months, three months at the stretch for that fall and Christmas season.
Well, when you, when you do that on a daily basis, too, you're looking at somebody who's probably on that property 90 days a year.
Exactly.
So is that all that much different than doing every Saturday?
That puts me 52 days a year.
And, you know, I mean, I don't see her situation much more than the farmer's market. They come, they set up, but at the end of the farmer's market, all, everything's gone. So, I mean, I would say, you know, in the stretch of a day, when your tents go up, your tents come down. That's a temporary business.
You know, that, that example, that example is often brought forward, and even that's thought, councilman, in theory, I see the point. Here's how it plays out differently in Frank County. The farmer's market is located downtown where there's public parking and there are restrooms that are available to participants in that activity. When you put a number of people on a particular property that doesn't have parking available, doesn't have ingress egress available for that parking to come off the highway, and doesn't have the proper restroom, sanitation facilities available for those folks, then that begins to interfere on adjacent properties and adjacent businesses who have met all of the regulations available on the premises. So there is, there is a practicality, it can play out differently. And again, we just need that guidance on where we draw that line.
Do we require a restroom?
She's not necessarily saying that referring to your problem. I understand. She's not, she's just, there's a definition. We've had this on the corner where the old Dairy Queen was.
That's right.
We've had this across this street from Lowe's. We've had this, the Green Man. Currently today would be another issue there.
Now, I'd say the Lowe's and the Green Man are two different things because they were there every single day.
Right. They still exist without a structure, without a-
I know, but they're there every day.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's, you're a business if you're there every day. I think putting up and taking down 45 weeks of a year, 45 days of a year is not a, yeah, that's not permanent.
Not permanent.
That's not the same as setting up Monday through Saturday.
Green Man, they're 24, I mean, is that one permit?
Maybe 24 today. Literally, so they're always there here. I think you're, he's always-
Green Man was permitted on Main Street?
No, I don't believe so.
But it looks so bad on Main Street.
There's no-
I don't believe so. I think that's a fact.
So what's the problem? How can he continue to go?
That's a good point.
I know it is. He can go in Valley, he can go to Valley the whole year. And here the lady trying to do a right to help somebody, you catching hell? We shouldn't do that.
Well, I beg to differ. We've done everything that we can to assist Ms. Ellis, her being with this. And she is caught in a very difficult situation, and I give her that. I also give her that we've done everything that we could to assist her. Unfortunately, what has happened is we do not have certain ordinances on the books, the guides, the staff, and how to evaluate her applications. And because I don't have an ordinance that actually requires a vendor permit to be issued, nor can I go and shut down the Green Man or anyone else who is operating without one. Well, what am I going to send complaints to do?
So wait a minute, you can't, you can't set down the Green Man? So you should just go ahead and-
I don't need to cut anybody short. But she's been told now since February, making nothing. Green Man has been opening up 300, and plus, I'll tell you something else, too. But anyway. I think, I think from, from my standpoint, until we can get something, you know, like this, we should let the lady open back up and, 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 I mean, and that would do-
In health-
Robert, realistically, how long before we could have something that we could discuss? Again, a document, three documents, two talks?
By the next council meeting, I think we could. If we get a little bit of guidance here today.
Well, is there something, like, can shut the Green Man down?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, can we give Ms. Ellis? Is there a way to give Ms. Ellis?
My city, the city code enforcer came to my lot and told me that he would hate to have to take me to court.
The city code enforcement had Ms. Ellis's lot in response to a request for service that we received to attend to the situation at that lot. We do not go out to that lot in regards to the lack of a permit.
Request for service, request for service.
Ms. Ellis's operations interfering with businesses adjacent to hers, and that business and others have called me in regards to that interference.
I respectfully say that you are wrong. I was told by that code officer, Mr. Eric Short, on that day that he was responding to an email from you that said, and I quote, "Either you or one of your men go by and see if there's any activity going on at that lot." That email came the day before that Saturday.
I have received complaints on Ms. Ellis's activity dating back to September of last year. And I have acted as director of code compliance on those complaints to investigate what was happening at the lot and what response was needed in that city.
Okay, I want to stop it. Mr. Short, you stand it up. Did you want to respond to that?
No. Ms. Manny is correct. This has been going on for quite a while with complaints from the general business.
Well, for the purposes of thinking about the ordinance and going forward, what kind of complaints were lodged by neighbors?
Mainly restroom use, that their business was being interfered by customers from the Flea Market coming into their business and starting verbal altercations.
Regarding being able to use the restroom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll have to get down to the bottom of things. So they were asking for a restroom?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've agreed to put up-
We have, we have since provided restroom facilities, yes.
Now, I will, I will give Ms. Ellis credit. We have worked with her on a number of applications. She's filed three different applications with us. Both were occupational tax certificate, which may be a permanent business, as well as a temporary vendor permit. She's done everything that we have asked her to do as far as submitting. We've asked for revision. She's done that, and we appreciate that. We've met with her, we've met with her husband, we've met with her father-in-law who owns the property. They are stuck in a very difficult position because the ordinances that we currently have don't give enough guidance to really steer how we would permit things moving forward.
Do they prevent her from operating her business on a Saturday-only basis? Whether or not she has a, or not, irrelevant. Does it prohibit, do these current ordinances prohibit her?
The only, the only ordinance we have, councilman, says that she has had occupational tax certificate, which means she has to meet all of the development regulations.
If she's in what?
Gives you the business. If what, yes. So that means she has to meet all of the development regulations, and she's not prepared to do that.
But she's not a permanent-
She's not business.
Okay, that's, that's what we're asking you.
And I, and I caution council to remember where we were a year ago with Mr. Gerald.
So Mr. Gerald had something set up Monday through Saturday that is different.
I understand, Phil, but it was still a non-permanent structure. It was stuff on a lot that we kept saying, if you'll just fix this, if you'll just fix this. And that went on for a year and a half and ended up, all I'm saying is, Mandy makes a very good point, which is, you're going to have to define what's temporary and what's not. Set some standards for that and go forward.
Mr. Gerald was-
It was temporary, I go, you know what, the dad doing permanent thing on the lot.
It was there every day. That's a permanent business.
Well, I mean, you're defining permanent as to when a human being is sitting there doing business versus as to what structures are permanent, like bathrooms and things like that. You got, I mean, it's a two-sided deal.
If you make it every day, it's not like a permanent.
Yeah.
What if he just closes four days a week and opens it?
And all that stuff goes on.
That's one of the issues.
But he can clear out every week. He left all his stuff. I mean, similar, that's why he's similar to the Green Man. He leaves his stuff out.
And Jenny's-
It's a little different than the farmer's market.
We make Jenny's-
And clears out for the Alabama.
On the parking lot.
Well, that's fine. You can-
And we made him become a business, which he did.
That's what he asked for.
That's right.
And I tell you this thing-
He wouldn't do the same thing, y'all agree? Same thing, you know, us.
Let me say about a little crap thing again. You know, we're fixing to be. We cannot treat everybody the same because everybody is not the same. What would you treat him fair? Now, why is it fair? She got told now in February, in Green Man, he opened, he want to sell meal now, now he got wood now.
No, I would say, I would say, I do not disagree with you.
He got wood now. Tomorrow he ain't gonna have peanuts.
So Gary, is it a solution?
He gonna have Christmas trees.
But is it a solution, you're saying, close the Green Man?
Wait, wait, wait. He didn't, he part of mine, he was with no permit.
So that's, I agree with Councilman Grill on this. That's the very question. Do we want to have regulations that allow for activities like the Green Man, like LND, like the open air market that Ms. Ellis is proposing? Or do we not? Then the staff knows which direction to move in, to draw these regulations and enforce the regulations adopted by you.
I think we ought to let Ms. Ellis open up for six days a month a day. And our mayor, somewhere in this ballpark, we could have that.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you. As long as in good faith, you do what, you know, obviously, Ms. Cody has asked, which is put a bathroom out. There's so many people aren't going in the university tire, using the bathroom.
It's already there.
That's a problem. And, but I do think that it's not fair to, to have code enforcement trying to determine who needs an OTC and who does not. We need to provide them with the guidelines to do that, and we have not done that.
Right.
So in June and July, we need to work towards doing that. And I think it would be a good thing to, and I know, you know, this just makes y'all cringe, but we need to know- but we need to go to the public hearing or a work session and tell the Green Man, "You need to get down here if you want your voice heard."
If you want to be open, if you want to be open, all this works.
You need to get down here and tell us why you need to operate the way that you're need to operate, and let folks know, because I know code compliance knows who's out there and who's doing this kind of stuff. And you get one shot, we'll hear what you have to say, we'll call it with an ordinance, and we'll go from there. Is that agreeable?
Which means we're staying even like ninety days.
Well, let's just stay optimistic and shoot for it, shall we?
Well, I think we've gone back like we did with Mr. Jenny to give you a fourth day, fourth day back.
No, we're not. We're, I think, I think we have a...
I mean, we just, we do it, we do it. We always waste a lot of time with this. I mean, you know, we got one doing wrong, and one wants to do right. We're all dealing with one that wants to do right. And make the other one to do wrong, and make them do right, too.
I mean, seems to me she's operating out a whole lot different than the farmer's market. And yes, the farmer's market does have a bathroom that the city provides. I mean, neighborhood center, but I mean...
I think there's some guidelines for doing that, so I think, do we all agree?
I agree.
Okay.
Um, what do we do about their vendors? Uh, they have to buy?
Not, not until we resolve...
Are the vendors for the farmer's market permitted by the city? Or do they just get a vendor's permit from the farmer's market?
They just get a vendor's permit from the farmer's market, to my knowledge.
I mean, that, it seems to me what she's trying to do is not all that different from the farmer's market. Everything is cleared out of the parking lot at the end of the day. Nothing's there except the fort body, I guess.
My family, my family picks up trash, we police the parking lot. Our neighbors, um, from the residence area next to us are, are the biggest problems with trash, and my family picks the trash up weekly.
And is the bathroom in the major complaint?
Bathroom facilities being absent and not being maintained, as well as parking. Just the vehicle movement on that property interferes with adjacent properties as well.
It's confusing, because there used to be a structure on it, so now it's confusing. Where you turn in, where you don't turn in, that's the national lines, that way. Because she doesn't work, but you have some say.
Yeah. There's some issues there, because there's little children that's right next to the residential areas, so it, it comes with different issues in the farmer's market down on the Seattle parking lot that's got to be addressed. But I hope you understand that ordinances like this are not, are not there because of folks like you necessarily, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
In the sense that, yeah, I'm glad you go and pick up your trash, and yeah, I'm glad you do all those things. It's the right thing to do, and we appreciate that. However, if you just leave a wide-open whoever, what policy, there are plenty of people that aren't going to do the right thing then.
I understand.
So, you know...
And as far as the signage and the traffic flow, once I get a license and, and get set, I mean, we'll be glad to put up permanent signs as far as in directing the traffic flow that agree with the city's sign policy, and, I mean, we'll be glad to handle all of that when we get everything settled. But I just want...
When you say permanent sign, then you go against temporary license, so let's just...
Well...
Let's just go down there right now. We'll, we'll work through... Yeah, we'll, we'll work through that issue, but, um...
The sticky signs in the dirt.
Word of mouth is going to be your best friend.
Mm-hmm.
When you start putting signs out there...
Yeah, signs up, buying billboards, it's going to be an issue. All right, so we'll, at next council meeting, we'll set up a time to, to, to go over this again, okay?
So we're open for sixty days?
May I, can I get a room now? Does she pay the current ordinance thirty-five dollars a day for a temporary permit?
I think we have to go with...
Is she required to have a permit right now?
If she's considered a temporary, or temporary is thirty-five dollars a day, that is considered a temporary permit.
Haven't you been paying that yourself?
If she's doing that, if she's a week, it would be thirty-five dollars a day.
And I, I would agree, she's, to pay it, yes, but if not, there's someone else in this town that's not paying that? We're about, we're about to lodge a burden of...
Well, you're paying thirty-five bucks a week, and this company guy pays thirty-five bucks for his whole three months?
He's saying it's not.
Everybody that answers on how to apply who does this, they come to us and they ask for a temporary permit. It is thirty-five dollars a day, and most of the time it's one or two days a week, and they don't come.
I'm not saying it needs to be free for all for sixty days, but I mean, I, I have a, I have a hard time with her going right to check for thirty-five dollars when we've got somebody else that's there seven days a week to be around.
Which, which begs the question, does that, does that issue need to be addressed in, in an enforcement letter delivered?
Well, you kind of opened Pandora's box, because, uh, how long, and Manny, this is a question of ours. How long, and I, I, this is not about you, so, uh, how long is the, is the business across the street from the Gaby Station or the old McDonald's to remain nameless? How long have they been there?
As long as I've been here, probably. And then so our, our, the only enforcement policy, Council, that I need to enact under my responsibilities was to take those things that were here that had not previously been enforced. We've had to tolerate that because it's been a welcome practice.
Well, it...
But those things that would come in, we've enforced.
The, the problem is, it could be, it could be perceived, and I'm not saying it is, but it could be perceived that since, uh, the former city manager owned the property, and it's been there for a while, and, and no, and no enforcement has ever been done, it could be perceived that there is being given preferential treatment to that location, which I'm not saying is the case, but it could be perceived that way. Uh, and if that is the case, I think they should now be forced to comply with everything like Mr. Lewis is saying, as everybody else is.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Councilman, and so we have drawn the best practice for enforcement that we could in a difficult circumstance, which was what had been tolerated has been tolerated. New things have been...
But what you're, what you're saying is it was asked, asked of you to be tolerated, or you were, in your perception, it was necessary to be tolerated. Why was it necessary to be tolerated?
It, it didn't rise to a level of life safety or other detriment at that time to allow for code enforcement detention. We have concentrated on life safety issues and the lack of data structures. Now this is becoming more and more, these temporary venues are becoming more and more of an issue for which we need guidance.
But that's a permanent. He's no different than the Gerald location, across the street from Lowe's.
All of this is...
He has no bathroom, he has a place to park, but he has really no defined area.
Right, and what distinguished L and D was we did not give them a permit. Mr. Gerald came to council and received council permission to operate in that fashion, which meant, which took my hands off the situation from both a permitting and enforcement perspective.
I, I guess, I guess to paraphrase what Councilman Chance is saying, it seems just a tad bit disingenuous for us as a governing body
To pick and choose.
To pick and choose. If somebody happens to come up and say, "Can I open?", then we say, "Under X number of circumstances." And then if somebody goes and blatantly purchase, puts themselves down the street open every day, and we just don't do anything with them, that...
Only live with the former city manager. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm not saying that you've done anything wrong.
Wrong, it's just...
Could be a little bit, uh...
And that's why I'm saying, I think her permit for the next sixty days, that probably, we can, we can probably... Let's generalize, we can cover that thirty-five dollars.
We could do that thirty-five dollars for the next sixty days.
And maybe, and maybe like the mayor said, Mr. Short needs to let the Green Man know, policy one, unless...
The Green Man, he has had a license since nineteen ninety-nine. He started out at the old blockhouse from nineteen ninety-nine. He, to this current day, does have a business license.
To operate on that location.
Does he meet all the specifications?
Who issued the business license?
We did, because it's always been done that way, and...
But he didn't have a bathroom?
Back in the conversation was... Back in the conversation was, because he used to have one, he just, he just did it.
So when he moved from his old location, do you remember when he moved, Miss Sue, from the old one down to McDonald's? It was about three years ago, wasn't it?
He moved from L L K to the way he was, he just moved.
It's, it was two, three years ago.
It's been two years.
I just have the information where it started out in nineteen ninety-nine, and he would always get a yearly application, and it's just continued on. Even though everybody knows and nobody's addressed it, because, and since, you, sometimes you just go past it. You know it's there, you don't notice it, so no one's there actually.
I don't want to take away his right to earn his living, but at the same time, we're, we're, Danny, as you said, we're picking and choosing.
We are.
I mean, it, it's, you know, just as arbitrary as us just saying, okay, well, you can have one now, and you can't.
I, I need to clarify that, if I may. I, I don't feel like we're picking to the code enforcement nor, nor permitting. And, and I understand what you're saying, Councilman, I, I do.
This is not directed at you. This is directed at Council, at the mayor. This is just saying, you take direction from us.
That's right, and that's what we're asking for.
And it appears that you took direction in the past, and this was just tolerated. And now if we're, I mean, it's out in the open now, so let's go ahead and tolerate it.
However it happened, there's...
However it happened. Just because it was, it was done in the past and it was wrong does not mean it should be done in the future.
What did you just say there, Phil? I couldn't hear you. Get your microphone, Phil, on you.
I said regardless of how it happened, the appearance is that we're giving favoritism to the appropriate property owner, in this particular case, the former city manager. So however it happened, it doesn't really matter how it happened, and we're not blaming anybody, but the perception is we're giving favoritism. Whether we're doing it or not, the perception is that. And that's not what, that's not what we're here to do. So, here to treat everybody, like you said, Gary, can't treat them all the same, but treat them all fair, yeah?
But this is, and this is not the first conversation we've had about this. But nothing's ever been taken forward enough to say this is what we're going to do.
Well...
I know that it's the tenth conversation.
It's just been a whole new conversation of, of, of all, no, really, everybody. Previous city managers, everybody, has had this conversation before. But no one has come forward and said, "We need to address this lobby."
Well, and, Miss Sue, let me, I'm, let me ask you a couple of quick questions. One, does the pumpkin guy out on Brandon, over there by Brampton, does he require, is he required to have a fort body?
He got a, he got a, he has a travel file, I think, before he had.
Yeah, but that's, they sleep in that usually.
But he has a fort body, never had one.
There is, okay. And then, and does he pay thirty-five bucks a day?
No, he gets, he got a yearly until last year, when we were...
A yearly occupational certificate, even though he operates on a seasonal basis? So he's paying, what, a hundred and fifty bucks or something?
But last year was...
And we're charging her thirty-five bucks a week?
Last year, we sent a letter, because again, this is one of those issues that was started at day one, and they were addressed, and said this is what we're going to do. Everyone is aware of it.
Oh, oh, all right.
You've heard us, I fear your mind.
So he, he got a yearly until last year, he sent a letter, Phil, that comes in this year. He will have to pay a thirty-five dollars a day, a month, he will have to be in the stands, and... So that's where we are.
Okay, so here's what we know. What we know is we really have no ordinance.
Yes.
What we know is there's been different situations that have arisen and have been treated differently. Um, and now we have a vendor or a potential business license holder, we shall see, that would like to do something on their property. So, in, in the near term, we're going to say, Miss Ellis, that put a toilet on your property, take your parking, and for the next sixty days, the council has agreed to waive your temporary permit fees for you and your vendor, while we come up with an ordinance that we all realize needs, we need something to direct folks so they know what they can and cannot do. Um, and we will work towards that. Is that agreeable to Council? Okay. Is that agreeable to you, Miss Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Why don't you say we're putting sixty days on that?
Sixty days on that, because we're going to make ourselves come up with something.
How about if we, if we extend it, because I don't want her going back to sixty days because we've had some issue.
Well, let's, can we do ninety, and we agree to, to get it out by the end of the summer?
Well, I'm going to say ninety, or until we reach, uh, an agreement on the next ordinance.
Can we try to reach an agreement at ninety days?
I don't know, thirty days. I'm just saying, it's funny how things just keep coming up with us.
Oh, no.
Well, July is a slow month, so...
Okay.
Is there ever a slow month?
Whenever it leaves that.
Until we reach an agreement on the ordinance.
That we're going for, there you go.
But we're going to really, really, really try.
So ready to say, you want to...
To do something, and if, and we really do need to do that, because we've got pumpkins and Christmas trees and all kind of mess coming up, so...
So to treat every, to treat singular situations similarly, which I agree with, that means for the next ninety days or until we come up with an ordinance, staff will not deny nor approve any permits, nor will we take any enforcement actions from code compliance. If Miss Ellis is to receive this benefit, then why wouldn't everyone else also receive this benefit?
Well, I think what we're saying is obviously, if you're going to do something...
Because there are...
You, you also may want to pay a visit to some of the vendors, said and unsaid, and just let them know that...
Hey, this is coming...
Within nine days, if they want their voice heard, they might want to come up, let it be heard.
We're going, I mean, we're going to work fairly quickly on this, so...
I would assume that does not mean when August rolls around and people come in on their normal annual booking, book buying back, or, or book selling, that's not changing. They're coming in, still doing what they're doing.
That's what I was saying. Does this include everybody for ninety days?
No.
Do people come in?
No.
Current, current operating, or those that operated within the last ninety days?
I think the bottom line is we're trying to create a different definition of temporary business. There's going to be a variety of, because I think there's a difference between a temporary business and a seasonal one. There's a difference between every other Saturday, or every other Saturday and every day for forty-five days.
This would make Alan's head explode, yeah.
Miss, Miss Ellis, you're going to bring in the permits that Ms. Cody has given you? The bathroom, parking, and all that?
Yes, ma'am, it's already there.
You're going to be in there this entire time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other than that, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Don't leave through the company.
No, do I have, hey, excuse me, Phil, hold on. Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh six?
Certainly.
That was second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Phil, you're being contrary. Is it an aye?
Yes.
Okay, all opposed. Public hearing closed. Okay. Have one on the weekend. Have one on the weekend. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to open up a public hearing on ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh seven?
Motion to open.
That was second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I mean, three ayes?
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Public hearing opened. Manny, can you please discuss the, what's coming before us, which is the design standards for the new downtown State Front Center district, which goes in with our tax allocation district?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you. This is a draft of design standards that was put together at the request of numerous entities, the South Main Street Revitalization Committee, Downtown Development Authority, and others to apply to our downtown area, what is our jurisdiction of our downtown, uh, Development Authority, to require certain standards in aesthetics to be reached in addition to the normal standards of life safety and building codes, zoning things of that nature. This is our first attempt at this at an ordinance level, and it's wrapped into our zoning ordinance, so it will be treated as a matter of development regulation through our planning commission and city council as setbacks and use regulations and things of that nature. This ordinance would be triggered at the building or modification of the building at fifty percent or greater of the fair market value. It does take some steps to begin to preserve and maintain our historic buildings and properties in town. It regulates murals on buildings, um, and works in congruence with our sign ordinance in that regard. It also gives regulations on building materials, a color palette for both your building materials, your ready materials, and your signage. It does require sidewalks and pedestrian areas to be installed on properties, lighting in regards to our safety program by the police department, and a great deal of landscaping, both at the edges of the property and at the sidewalk areas of the property. It also moves the bulk of parking up to the rear of the buildings and requires mechanical and electrical equipment to be screened from heat. This ordinance has been vetted by the South Main Street Committee as a whole. We have met three or four times now in the small subcommittee to look at the particular terms. It will go to planning commission for consideration and review this evening at five P.M. It will take your comments and move forward as you want to do.
I will say, as it regards, Miss Manny put in a lot of hard work, and it went in front of a committee that was, included a lot of individuals from developers to, I don't know, engineers. It just, and it was vetted right to left, sideways, top and bottom. And I think that they did a very admirable job. The initial documentation was sort of formatted after what Gringle, South Carolina, who's done with their very successful downtown revitalization, and, um, I just commend you. I think you all did a very, very good job coming up with this. And I just commend you, I think you all did a very, very good job coming up with this.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody from, perhaps remember us some more? Do I have anybody from the audience that would like to come speak to the new proposed guidelines? Alan, would you like to, since you've been very involved with that?
Yeah, I do appreciate the city, Mandy, thank you for the lead on this. We did agree with the mayor. We, maybe we had realtors, we had engineers, we had developers, and then we had bankers, and all those kind of folks looking at making sure that we have a product that we think at the end of the day would be proud of. I'm sure there'll be some challenges and some, even to the document itself, but at the end of the day, I think we all take pride in our community, and this is one way to help develop something that generations will enjoy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have anything they want to add to this? But Mandy, tell me the process is gonna go in front of the plans, okay?
Yes, and for adoption, we'll go in front of planning and zoning tonight at five. We'll take any comments or additions, provisions that they ask for, and incorporate that back into the document that will be presented to you all for second reading in a public hearing. If passed, and whatever ordinance passed, we'll then insert it into our zoning ordinance. Anytime a property comes before us for a permit, if there's fifty percent or more in fair market value or changes to that particular property, these regulations would be triggered. Or if a new building in the district, obviously, these regulations would be triggered. We would review for compliance with this article, just like we do the remainder of the development regulations for permit. If compliance is achieved by the applicant, then a positive issue at staff level. If not, that applicant would have the opportunity to come before you in one of two ways. One, if they just disagree with the staff's interpretation or application of the ordinance to their application, they could come to you for an appeal, and just so, just like with the rest of the zoning ordinance, we were safely disagreed with staff or Mandy, and would like to ask for a ruling from you all on what is required of them. Or they can come through for a variance, if they say, yes, we all agree that this is the rule that we cannot or do not wish to meet the rule, we'd like a variance, in which case, if you go through planning condition for a review and public comment, and then on to you all for final judgment.
Any questions, Mandy, for our closing panel here?
So what's gonna happen is you all can vote on it, and then the committee can decide, and then it'll come back, go ask in two weeks.
Correct.
Yes.
I want to ask, Phil, is Chairman Comerson supporting these guidelines?
I think he's for, I, I, as I said, not only have contractors and realtors and engineers that are involved, also people that love business downtown, very involved with this process and discussion, and conference, and everything.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions for our closing panel here? We'll wait and hear what planning and zoning says. Fair agreement. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing of proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh seven?
Salute.
That was second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor wants to hear one word to this item, I think.
Absolutely. I don't know. You just, you just do it without, just like.
No, go ahead.
I may change the consideration for a motion to award a contract for the installation of automatic meters and a meter reader transmitters to utility and water services, in amount not to exceed five hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven cents. This probably just comprises CIP, numbers here, numbers there, funded by lost two thousand seven and two thousand thirteen. So I'm guessing, let's bring up Darren, and if we have any questions, we've got a whole crew here. We've got gas, water, wastewater, everybody's here, so. Darren, anyone else want to put up more about what we're doing here?
Thank you, sure. We went through the RFP process on this, but basically due to the technical requirements, it's very specialized field with water and natural gas meters that radio transmit to a central hub. These were funded out of two thousand seven and two thousand thirteen loss funds, and we had four, four companies attend a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and had two follow it through to the final sum total. We evaluated on five criteria, with one being cost, and the others. The total budget for this, the number I'm about to give includes the materials too, this is just a labor contract, we're awarding here today, was over one point four million, the five ninety-eight, seven twenty-seven fifty we're regulating it today, includes the labor. It did include a reprogramming fee, and I'll explain that in a minute. And we did discover approximately six hundred and twenty meters that had to be replaced, so we'd have the transmitting feature on those, and that added another thirteen thousand and change of that. The hundred and sixty-eight thousand alternate that we're throwing in there included a reprogramming fee, where they would come back and we'd get our new utility building system in, and we reprogrammed, you know, right now we do a thousand gallon increments, this is down to, I think, a gallon. But we started to look at it, put things together, and we got the water department to look into it, and they, they came up with, our current census came up with software that would allow us to program here initially, and it will change over to the new building system, pretty much, I believe, come back and spend most of that hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, so we can save, I think it amounts to about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand of that hundred and sixty-eight we'll save by not remobilizing and reprogramming. With that being said, I mean, we recommend award of not exceed five ninety-eight, seven twenty-seven fifty. We do, we do not expect to spend really close to that, because that does include the one sixty-eight in there. As we go along, we just don't know what things will pop up, but we're certainly well within budget, and so we recommend the five ninety-eight, seven twenty-seven fifty to utility service, I'm sorry, utility and water services.
All right, so this will make the entire system? Not, like, we started off, you had to read the meter numbers. Well, read it back and forth, I mean.
The entire system will be altered, except for the currently possibly netted, if still having gas, but they may have water source in contact with us, or has, they may have a bad water connection. So in terms of, 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 of.
So we used to read them, and then we touched them. And now this is going a step further.
We've got one valve, we have to drive by now, and this is actually, we're gonna work out, keep it moving, work out. But this will be where we, we've got three, what we call the later stations, installed through the rail, and that, all the readings will be transmitted to a water meter, and then through census technologies and software, and then, right now, it's just old, like, built software, hopefully in six and a half months, we'll do more advanced software. Pretty much all, all of them.
Well, you all said the best. This is the reason why you've been able to continue to add water accounts and not add sets. For many years.
We'll have that. This, we'll reallocate those to your position, I know, from the past, to, um, meter system technicians, the, the technology, the technology of, of, uh, the, through centralized and corporate, that will, that we just have to have, and we'll, 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 we'll.
One, one of the wells, one there.
Saying, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking Anne of Ireland.
Now, my, my, it also gives rebuilding, you're able to read the meters in real time, and we'll be able to track, report usage over a thirty day period by hours. And in the next phase of this, a year or so down the road, we'll have it to where the customer will be able to go in and mark their own meter in real time, set a large point, that if the usage goes over a certain amount, it'll notify them by, so.
So then that's where the new software coming in, I'm right, ma'am?
If they have the new software, about the end of that, it'll take them that upgrade to the meter read technology system.
Any further questions?
Yeah, just to double check, this five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, it covers four thousand three hundred and fifty water meters, twenty-seven hundred retro centers, and installing ninety-three hundred A.R. transmitters.
Uh, you're looking at this sheet here?
Uh, everything on that.
It's actually a whole sheet, it, it takes care of replacing some meters. Some meters just, the transmitters installed, same or dual transport, customized and served meter boxes to accommodate for the used transmitter, uh, replacing some meter boxes, they're plastic, they, they'll do that while they're here. Also, we're gonna negotiate with them, where we actually take, they actually take photographs of each meter that's pulled out, so we've got a record of the meter address, in case there's a dispute with usage. The cost is very minimal, it's seventy-five percent, seventy-five cent per meter, so we're gonna sit back down and go through and negotiate some of this stuff. And based on one area, we told you about, uh, one sixty-eight, one sixty thousand, you're gonna reprogram it. Shouldn't have to do that, but we'll need, we're gonna have to add a bunch of, uh, program to the initial stage, or phase of this structure, it's originally have a program, thirty-seven hundred thirty meters, they'll actually have program by ten thousand, so it'll save roughly, I think it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
I might point out, I might point out to you all, the council, that over the past fifteen, eighteen months, City Stan has installed a large, large number of these in-house, which is probably saving us about a half million dollars a year.
Yeah, they, they already upgraded all to one inch, but each had two inch with an exception, uh, I think, uh, Darren mentioned a while ago, we've defined it, we've got like five hundred and twenty, thirty-four inch meters that were manufactured, made, manufactured for a two-year period. If I'm not capable of being programmed down to, you know, like, gallons, or not, that's not gonna be, you know, it's, we're, we're, although, there's also some, uh, one and a half inch, two inch, that aren't capable of being programmed down to tens. So we will have an order of about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to purchase registers and chambers for those meters, but we'll do, uh, uh, upgrade in-house, without a cost added.
Okay. Any further, further questions for Mr. Frank? Or Van? Or Wayne? Or Steve? All right, do I have a consideration of a motion to award a contract for the installation of automatic meters and meter reader transmitters to utility and water services in amount not exceeding five hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents?
Salute, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, Van, do you have one coming up? Your name's on this. Consideration of a motion to award a source purchase for six hundred and twenty census water meters to H.D., uh, Water Works Limited, in the amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred eighty dollars.
Yes, these are the six hundred and twenty meters, not personnel determined that we're not capable of being programmed down to gallons. It actually senses with great help by running serial numbers based on manufacturer, the manufacturing year. And any serial number that started with fifty-two, which was fifty-two million, there, we're not capable of. So it made our thought a lot simpler by just pulling, doing a query on, uh, the actual serial number on the meters. Uh, like I said, the sixty-one thousand three eighty for the six hundred and twenty meters, that'll have to be replaced. Uh, there's also another sixteen thousand four forty-nine that Roberts approved to sign on home for the registers and chambers for the each had two inch, about purchased. But I will say, with the approval you just made on the construction, or the installation, as well as the sixty-one three eighty, that hopefully you're gonna approve this morning, and the sixteen four forty-nine for the registers and chambers, we, I, we'll end up still with about three, three hundred thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and four cent remaining in this budget, we had two point nine million, but, so, even with all this, hopefully, when the project is complete, we'll still have it at three hundred thousand, like, we're gonna be able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Frank? Okay, do I have a consideration of a motion to award a source purchase for six hundred and twenty census water meters to H.D., Supply Water Works Limited, in the amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred eighty dollars?
Salute.
Do you have a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item twenty was done at the beginning, so we're gonna move to agenda item twenty-one. Consideration of a motion to approve the extension of the fiber conduit project in Brooklyn Electric from, electric from Hill Street to Public Works, in amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. And I must say, this is a much sexier agenda item than Mandy's. Law, I'll need some conduit.
Well, there you go.
Some fiber conduit.
No, Sam.
And then, there, any questions?
I'm sorry.
Um.
I do.
This is.
Just get the camera back up for you.
You just gotta love that, that, that.
When you, when you miss it, you miss it.
If you got a lot of speed, that transfer, yes, you did.
There you go, there you go. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best, light it up. This is a, we've been this project on a per unit basis. Um, we're gonna extend this, it's gonna be about five thousand feet to go from Hill Street to Public Works, and it was a nine dollar and thirty-four cent per unit pricing on that, and we're adding some communication boxes and some incidental on the treasure wire. That leaves the project with about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars still left, and, and so, we'll, uh, with that remaining money, we'll put fiber optic in the sections that we leave, uh, and, and, and we still should have under budget. So, there you go, this is my sexy project. Any questions?
Five more, sir?
Five.
Well, I don't share the mayor's business.
This is, we're making long after.
I do appreciate you continuing to promote Mr. Fixer's thing, and I guess all work, I just appreciate it.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, we have any questions for Brian about this project?
Absolutely not.
Wait, it's orange, Blue.
Okay. All right, do I have? Right there. Do I have a motion to approve the extension of the fiber conduit project?
Most of them, most of them. Let's just call it item twenty-one.
Okay, so. Do I have a second?
Here, a second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so. All right. Out of business from city council, I just, I just have one item, and I want to, to bring up, and I don't know, I know Robert helped. I saw Jeff out there, Jeff? No, she, that's, Amber. Anyway, uh, this weekend, as you all know, City of States were on Georgia Southern University, and the State for Convention and Visitors Bureau hosted the Georgia State Cup Soccer Tournament, and it could not have been any more tremendous. Seventy to eighty percent of the folks that attended were from the Atlanta area. They could not have been more complimentary of the host committee of Georgia Southern University. I don't know how many of you know this, but there were so many people that attended that our local hotel, motel industry could not handle it, and Georgia Southern opened up Freedons Landing, and it filled to capacity to hold those folks. The economic impact, and it's just pretty much hardcore dollars, is estimated to be in excess of one point two million for the weekend, um, for the first time ever. The, uh, Georgia Cup, a lot, all the games that were played at Georgia Southern Soccer Stadium were streamed live, and, uh, on the website, and Georgia Southern did that, and the photography, the videography with that, for that was just outstanding, and they had actual real soccer announcers from Atlanta that came down and announced every one of those games. Um, and it has opened up a tremendous opportunity for us to host other tournaments, and we are now on everybody's radar screen, and I could not have been more proud of the City of States for Georgia, Georgia Southern University, and all the organizations that worked together to do this. It is one of the finest things that our community has done in a very, very long time. It is one of the finest things that our community has done in a very, very long time, so I just want to acknowledge that. And Robert worked as a marshal all day Saturday, so I thank you, and Jeff worked as a marshal as well.
What did he work?
That's a good question.
He basically sits between the fields and say, whenever somebody gets injured, make sure that doesn't get them dead. They need an adult there, that's what I was talking about.
I wish you, I wish you could have seen how many people were out at the rat fields and how many people were at Georgia Southern. I was out there in the course of the weekend, off and on, and I, I just can't tell you how effusive the folks that came to this were about Statesport, Georgia, and all it had to offer. And in the bigger scheme of things, a lot of those kids are looking at colleges, and I can't tell, I have parent after parent saying, we had no idea Georgia Southern University offered these kinds of facilities and opportunity, and how, you know, that now this was their child's number one choice. And so it just goes to show that even though it was a soccer tournament, it could not have done more, we could have had better PR for the City of Statesport, Georgia Southern University, Monmouth County, so. And I just want to say thank you to both of you all, and just to let you all know, just how great that ended up being, so.
How many teams involved?
There was the five, four, in six or eight age groups.
Fifty-three.
Boys and girls.
Fifty-two teams total.
So, anyway, thanks, that's all I have to say.
I got just a few brief things, real quick. Acknowledge two alcohol license applications at Eckers, they're applying for change in alcohol license holder, community background investigation, and RJ Staker is applying for alcohol license background investigation as well.
And I must say that we do have a Tuesday celebrity in our audience, Mr. Neesmith, who had, Duane wrote a very nice article about you today. And we appreciate you continuing to evolve your business with this and being such a rock solid corporate citizen down in South Main, as hopefully that transitions as well, so we thank you for that.
And then just two other quick items, there is, Councilman Chance, you'd ask about the city, I have improvements, and those will go for advertised bids this weekend. We're looking at thirty days, and hopefully we get the bids in, they'll be good, and probably award a contract two, three years after that. And then finally, I appreciate the temporary vendor discussion that we had, because staff needs, they may be painful and sometimes long and winded and extended and whatever, we've got to have that direction a lot of times, so it may seem simple on the surface, but when you deal with these every day or every week, it's easy, if we have that clear understanding, that we know how to enforce it, and we can be very comfortable, so I appreciate y'all taking the time, working through that a little bit, and we'll have a work session, and hopefully get dressed and, that's all I have.
Ms. Sue, we have any public comments?
Mayor, I have one thing before. Um, I'll be real brief, so yesterday I had an opportunity with the Boys and Girls Club, I'm going to be working with them, some boys got stuff, like we've done in the past, and she brought up to me, long story short, she said, well, there won't be, about eight of these kids won't be here for the end of the summer. I think these dates are on, but, I want to use the end of the summer because they're at the rant, the Twenty-First Century Grant, and they'll start back over in September. So I asked her to explain to me what that meant. So let's just imagine there's a group of one hundred kids that are at the Boys and Girls Club today. At a certain date, those kids, a portion of those kids are no longer coming to the Boys and Girls Club, and they don't restart until school restarts. Same thing goes for fall break, some of the Christmas break, some of the other breaks, because there's a gap in the funding because of Twenty-First Century Grant. So I said, well, let me work on that, what is, tell me what that is, and y'all are going to believe this, for twenty-five hundred dollars, there's no gap for those kids. And I said, well, I'm going to see what I can do. So my first round of seeing what I can do is come to you guys. We currently are, have budgeted ten thousand dollars, so I'm not asking this to make a motion today unless you have one other question. But we have kids in our, kids in our group, they're sitting side by side, and one of them is not able to attend the Boys and Girls Club on a certain date because of a grant that, that has a, a gap in his funding. I'm going to work on it outside of council as well, but I would love for you guys, if you guys are even remotely interested, I guess, Mayor, if it's okay with you, just email Robert, or email the mayor and ponder it. That's a very small amount of money. Here we were discussing one point four million, six hundred thousand. How's a way we could tie it from water, I don't know, but I mean, we'll give a dollar. Every time you flush a commodity, you give a dollar, and it was, I don't know, but, um, as a, as a test. But that's, in our community, one of the things we talked about at our retreat was that, and to hear that's that small of a difference, and a kid can get a Boys and Girls Club. I don't know exactly, I don't want to get into continuing to ask for that from that, from that group, but hearing that is just like, my God.
I think the issue Councilman Redd always comes up with is not necessarily money, whether it's two hundred or five hundred or five thousand, is, is it gratuitous? And when we openly say we're going to supplant a grant with funding, then you're, it, it, would appear on the surface to be gratuitous. Does that make sense? And so that will have to be very carefully thought out. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the, I'm not disagreeing with it being a small amount of money, because in the big scheme of things it is, but, you know, when you're charged with dispersing taxpayer funds, you have certain sets of guidelines by which to do that, and if it's gratuitous, then that becomes very problematic. So we can think through that.
And, and I asked Russell, tell me this, what, what is, what is that kid doing if he's not here? She's like, he's...
Yeah, I mean, and you know...
Which is, I hate to put that level on Rob Linsky and Lino, and I'm like, well, we can...
Well, frankly, we've got, you know, they've had to cut their rolls to a hundred and fifty, so above and beyond that, because of shortages and income and, and money and those kinds of things, so. I'll take any suggestions, feel free to email. We'll talk about, but I'm glad you brought that up, because there's plenty of people in our audience that can hear that, maybe have suggestions of their own.
Or checkbook.
Or checkbook. Okay. So, are we going in for this personnel? Potential litigation, you know, we haven't found potential litigation, so do I have a consideration of a motion, Jan, to accept the session to discuss personnel matters?
Sub move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nice. We can do this real quickly. You like some quick? Is that a discussion?
Sub move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The pass? Adjourned.